Just came up on the screen.
Okay, we're good to go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Welcome to this special budget meeting. And welcome to the folks at home that hopefully are joining us on our YouTube feed. The meeting itself will be recorded and it will be available on YouTube after it's completed. Council, you have an agenda that was emailed to you. What is your wish?
I'll approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. Seconded by Councilor Carver. All in favor? Motion's carried. On that agenda, there is one item for discussion at this point in time. And there was one follow-up closed session which will be conducted in camera. And our main topic of discussion, of course, is the operating and capital budget approval for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Mr. CAO, would you like to get us started, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mostly at the outset here for the council members and certainly for anybody watching, I wanted to outline the process from here. So last Thursday evening, as obviously the councilors know, Luke presented the draft budget documents. That was the first look at the budget documents. If anybody watching wants to go back, those recorded sessions are still available. So you get two hours of Luke walking us all through the budget documents. The riveting, riveting watch, no, actually it was a great job. And so from there, we have tonight's session, sort of first reaction, suggestions. Council will have, and it's up to you, Mr. Mayor is the chair, how you want to go around this, but an opportunity to ask questions of staff and talk their way through the budget and any proposals that they might want to make. As per last year, what we would do tonight is take direction from council by motion on amendments to the draft. So if there are suggestions tonight, we have an opportunity to make revisions. And then in the package for our next budget meeting on May 5th, we can send out a version with any revisions as per tonight's direction. And that's still a draft document. So the next meeting on May 5th will be considering that draft document with any changes or will be continuing the discussion. And then from there, or if council requires additional time, the intention is to refer the budget to the May 12th regular meeting of council, regular advertised meeting to do the approval. And that's effectively the same schedule as last year where we had the May 5th meeting, I think, on the 3rd or this meeting on the 3rd of May, and then the budget approval on the 14th. So yeah, so essentially tonight, Luke and I are at your disposal. And it may make sense to do an initial go around of sentiments before kind of working through and getting specific suggestions for amendment. But I will leave that to you. And we're here for any questions.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and just the last. With regards to closed session, I should mention, there's a closed session on the agenda tonight. There's a closed session on the agenda for the 5th. Those are there if we need them. There are certain items that may want to be discussed, which would need to be discussed in closed session. So if an item like that comes up, I might suggest let's park it for the closed session. And then, and if we don't need it tonight, then we don't have to go into closed session. Sorry for everything.
The, the last time that we met, we were on Microsoft Teams. And tonight we are on Zoom. I can see everyone on the Zoom screen. You can't do that with Microsoft Teams yet. So we kind of went around the bush every time to see if anyone had any questions or comments or issues they would like to raise. But because we can, I assume, all see everyone else, I would suggest we revert back to, if you have a comment or a question, then just indicate and we'll pick you up in sequence. Okay? All right. Councilor Bain, do you have an opening comment you'd like to make? You're on mute, John. Not at this time. Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I'm good at this time, Your Worship.
Okay. Counselor Carver?
Not now, thank you.
All right. Counselor Feeny?
The only thing I'd like to say now is that I think overall, like we're seeing a pretty substantial increase to the operating budget. At the same time, we're contemplating in the budget package to draw down upon non-operating funds to fund operating items. That's a marked departure from where the council's been the next, the last four, let's say, four years. So I would like to have an opportunity to kind of speak to that point later on in the, in the call, Mayor, about why I think that might not be the most proven way to proceed. But other than that, I think that's going to help us out a lot tonight.
Counselor now.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
And Counselor O'Neill?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Wenzel? See, he didn't have anything to say at this time.
Nothing to say at this time, thanks.
There you go. Okay. Mr. Hyde, are you ready to proceed?
Well, I guess with no, with no additional, additional remarks, and thank you very much, Counselor Feeny, for offering one there. I guess it, you know, it probably does make sense to walk through again. We're not going to go through all the notes. But it, you know, maybe the most conducive way to making sure the councilors are comfortable with what's there if they have any questions or suggestions. So Luke, are you in a position to take over the screen and do that? And what we'll do is we'll just go by section through revenues. If anybody has anything to ask or say about revenues and then expenditures and operating initiatives and capital and so forth, does that, does that seem reasonable to everyone?
And if we can refer to the, to the cover page for the document that we used, then we can each know where Mr. Wenzel is, is speaking to.
But we won't re, we won't be re-presenting the, the actual information this time. So I know we just sprung that on you all of a sudden, but hopefully you could get that screen sharing when you're ready.
Okay, I'm thinking, ready? So it should be with you in a second. Everybody can see it now, can they?
Let's go. I can.
Yep. Now we've lost the ability to all see each other, but I guess that's the choice.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I can, I guess you can resize the window. I don't know if everybody's done that. I guess you can kind of squeeze everybody in there.
Can I suggest on that point that if you hit the little icon with the three by three grid, you ought to be able to see both the document and all of the participants.
And if you can't fit everybody, just try to enlarge that black window, or at least that's how it appears online.
Okay.
So Luke, I think probably makes sense to jump past the summary sections and write to revenues. If, you know, the summaries will be adjusted, of course, as any adjustments that we make to the document, I'll just reflect that. So revenues section, wondering if anybody has questions or comments?
Mayor, I'd have a comment if this is the appropriate time to weigh in. Yeah, so, you know, I think hearing council over the last few meetings, it strikes me that there's a commitment to maintain the tack, the current tax rate. And therefore, the only impact on the taxpayer this year within the budget view is based on changes of their personal assessment. I think that's sort of the, where council seems to be at this point. The one item, I know that we do, are going to have a full year load of the increase of the water, the water rates this year. And also no changes anticipated to the, to the electricity rate. The only other item that I think might have mayor of discussing and edit would be around the infrastructure charge. So I think that, I think that that would be a point I think might be worthy of further counsel deliberation either later on this call or now, whatever, whatever's the best way to proceed.
Okay, my only observation, Counselor Feeny, was I think there was some references to tax rates and a desire to keep the tax rates consistent. I wouldn't go so far as to say that there was a commitment on the part of council to that issue. However, that being said, does anyone, anyone have a comment? Counselor Feeny, would you like to continue with your observations by the infrastructure charge? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted, maybe Mr. Feeny could elaborate on what he's planning to do there. I think it's status quo as far as I'm concerned, leave it as it is. But I'll wait to hear from Counselor Feeny.
My only thinking, my only thinking on the topic, council and mayor and staff is the, around, around the efficiency in the utility and the fairness of the infrastructure charge, which was a long time kind of coming. And I think we're really starting to see the benefits of the, of those changes. And again, that infrastructure charge is not only borne by homeowners, it's really borne by all utility payers, which is a much bigger pool of, much bigger, a much bigger pool of, of contributors to the overall pool. I think Luke, if Luke could chime in, I believe that number is plus or minus 800 to 850 providers of that, of revenue via that charge. That sound about right, Luke? So it's, it's not just the, it's not just the homeowners, it's all contributors to all people who participate in using utilities, pay into the infrastructure charge. My thinking is that, given some of the context from last evening, you know, a modest increase, maybe in that, I think we increased that budget by, it was at $15 or $20 last year? This is an annual increase. But I believe with, I believe that increase generates almost $20,000 in tax revenue, which is specific to capital items. And given that kind of the context of the conversation last evening in the closed session and other conversations and our ability to fund things down the road, it strikes me that if we were going to make any changes to any, that, to anything on the revenue side, that would be probably the most efficient place to, to place it because it spreads the, the increase in revenue across a bigger pool of people, not just people who pay property tax.
Counselor O'Neill?
I would support that.
I believe it was $10 last year, Luke, was it, that the infrastructure charge was increased?
I believe it was $10, yes.
So I think it's $10 equals, let's call it $9,000 in, in, in revenue, round, round numbers. So, you know, I'm not saying suggesting that $10 is any easier to come by this year than any other year. All I'm suggesting is that I think we're doing, we are making, we are making, we're doing the best we can to maintain current financial impact on residents. But that's an area that I think if we were going to make any change, that would be where it would be. I would, so I would suggest, I would suggest that an increase of that infrastructure charge from, from 275 to maybe, let's call it 290, might, might be worthy of councils' deliberations. And I'll leave it at that, Mayor, and we can move on to other items if you'd like.
Okay, before we leave that, would you, how do you get the broader application of the infrastructure charge versus the property tax market?
Luke, I think, has the very specific numbers, but I believe that number is driven off of everybody who is a water or electrical consumer through the utilities. So I think the, the volume driver there is in the low 800s versus, say, 400s for taxpayers paying by a property tax. Maybe Luke could chime in on that. And I think it is in the notes in one of the pages, however.
It's 818 on page.
Right.
18.
Thank you, Penny. I was just looking for that.
That's right.
So while we're talking about the infrastructure charge, I think it would help for people who are watching and for me to state the parameters of the infrastructure charge, why it was implemented and what it is intended to cover.
Like, that's a really fair point, Council Carver. So my understanding of the infrastructure charge, which had, what, did have a level of contention originally when it came in, I think many of you on the call, on the, on the, in the meeting will remember having that meeting at the, at the fire hall. But it was really meant to spread the impact of our capital agenda, which is, I'm guessing, seven or eight years old or nine years old, this, this project program, you know, over people who are more aligned with the consuming of the services. You know, so we had lots of, we, so it was an idea, we, we wanted to generate more revenue specifically for capital infrastructure projects. But we wanted to have that more fairly based over a broader spectrum of the people who use the infrastructure, rather than try to attract that, increase that revenue source just from property tax. And to my knowledge, every nickel we've ever raised through that fund, every cent of it has been dedicated to capital.
Okay. All right. Counselor Bain? You, John? There. You, you clicked right over it, John. There you go. Oh, it's gone. It keeps coming back.
Where are we at now?
Now, yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. I think probably the deputy mayor could weigh in on this one. But that charge was originally, I think it was sewer or something, wasn't it, Counselor Laszlo? And then it got changed to infrastructure when Mr. Wenzel was CAO.
That was originally the plan.
You can elaborate on it, and I'll go off because you're probably more familiar with it.
It was implemented when we put in the sewer treatment plant. And it was a way to pay it back. And a few of the councils of the day thought, let's just hide what we owe and the debt and everything on that in the tax bill, which would have been quite an increase in the tax bill. So the clerk of the day came up with this idea of, excuse me, putting in an infrastructure tax that everybody paid. And that's how originally started. And I'm not sure right now what year we did the sewer plant project. But that's when it all started at that time. And that time was just to pay down the debt of the, of the cost of the sewer plant. And that's where that money at that time was earmarked for, but now we have expanded it to do other things and to go into capital. But that's where it started.
Okay. Counselor O'Neill?
I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole on this, but I, that's a really interesting story and part of the, the history of the council. And I wonder if the deputy mayor has a recollection of that time and if there was a determination on the council of the time to, to not have that infrastructure charge continue? Or can you give me a little bit more context about, was it, was it intended to, to end? Or was it really intended to be a new infrastructure charge that would support all capital infrastructure projects going forward?
You're right. At the time, it was just to pay off the bills of the, of the treatment plant. And then we just kept it going for, for to raise money to put in the capital.
Okay. CAO? Bill, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Nope, I'd be.
Are you finished, sir?
Yep, yep.
CAO?
Oh, I just wanted to say that that really constituted a success story, looking back, because we're now far enough along. I remember when the lagoons were dug, that that, that project is behind us. And, you know, at this time, we're looking at replacement of wastewater lines that are over 100 years old. And now we have the infrastructure charge to help pay for that. So I think it's really a success story.
Okay. Counselor Bain, you had your hand up? Did you want to say something? You're on mute, John? Okay. No? Just a second, Counselor Bain. As soon as you click it off, it comes right back on again.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think, I think it's really been covered. I, as I remember, some years ago, when it was carried on, as I had asked the deputy mayor to kind of follow up on it, him being a little more familiar. But I think the idea was that it was just spread across everyone, even though maybe some of them weren't hooked up to the sewer or something like that. And it was just covering all users of the highway, sidewalks, and so on. Because I remember it. Maybe the deputy mayor could further comment on that one, too.
Counselor Carver, you were waiting to?
Yes, thank you. I, Counselor Bain referred to something I was going to mention, which is that there was some pushback from people who weren't on services and still having to pay. And there was also pushback from some tenants, I recall, feeling that it was onerous because their rents were, were put up. So it wasn't universally popular.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Bain, Counselor Bain.
Yeah, well, what Counselor Carver just said is very true because the people that own the buildings just simply passed that on, or a portion of it. So it was kind of prorated over the rents, like they weren't paying that whole cost. They were, it was, it was prorated, as I remember, Mr. Uden, I think, explained that at one point.
All right.
But the, but the essential principle was that it be spread amongst everybody who was using the services.
Exactly. Okay. I think, Mayor, the final point I'd make is that a modest $20 increase to that, to that fee generates around $16,000 in revenue, which would be in capital, which, given our traditional third, a third, a third match is about $50,000 in capital projects we would do, be able to do annually, that. So I think it's an efficient way to collect dollars now that's fair. And in the absence of, of really using any, of adjusting the tax rate and given our capital program and the conversations, I, I do think that, that would be appropriate. But I think we've hashed that out now, if you want to move on to other topics.
I, I think Counselor Feeny, you want to make a motion to that effect that we, in fact, increase the infrastructure charge, then we'll do it piece, do it piece by piece.
Well, I would make a motion to raise the infrastructure charge for 2020, 2021, from 275 today to 295 going forward.
Okay, we have a second here. Counselor O'Neill, all in favor?
Wait, wait, wait.
Go ahead, Counselor Carver, sorry.
Could you say again the difference it's going to make?
I believe Penny and I guess I rely on Luke to back me up here. But my understanding is that $10 annually per pair equals $8,000 of revenue. So $20 equals $16,000 of increased capital funding.
We're talking about a $15 increase, you said.
Oh, sorry. I, well, we could do it in increments of 10. And my, my motion was going from 275 to 295 annually.
295.
Yeah.
And that, and that 16,000, I think you suggested, would translate into $48,000 when you factor in the potential funding, matching funding from other levels of government. CAO?
I mean, oh, sorry. Just before we vote on this, I want to clarify, I'm sure Joe wouldn't mind this clarification. I don't want to take minutes. This is a motion to amend the draft 2021 budget to reflect a increase to 295, not a motion to set the, the rate at 295.
Fair enough.
When we approve the budget in a week or two, hopefully, then it will be set.
Yeah, it would be the, the one motion at that time will, will include that specification if we include it in the final version.
All in favor?
Can you see us all?
Four, five. Yes, I can see you all. I've got five people voting in favor and two, I would have to presume are not. Nay? All opposed? Okay. Five, if five in favor, two, two nays, the motion is carried, it will be adjusted.
Excuse me, Mayor, could you say the, the names of the councilors who voted for and who voted against?
We shouldn't, we need to ask for a recorded vote?
No, but it's because I can't see.
Being taken?
No, it wasn't, I, I'm not asking for a recorded vote, only because I couldn't see.
I'm sorry. Counselor Bain and the deputy mayor?
Thank you.
Voted against. Okay, go ahead, lead us onward. Luke?
So while we're still on revenues, because I think that was the last comment council had, I believe, on the revenue section. I just wanted to reference here, and it is obviously early days, but it is something that is public and that we've talked about today, became public as a proposal from the provincial government or, you know, very early word from the provincial government concerning a property tax subsidy, sorry, property tax financing program. This is in response to negotiations between NSFM and the province. So we will have more information, the mayor will share information. I would suggest we discuss this further on May 5th. But I just wanted to acknowledge that this budget being predicated on essentially a general rate deferral, so no rate increase in the draft budget, no general rate increase, now has a potential complement or alternative in the form of a targeted program intended to provide relief up to three years to individuals and businesses who need it. So it may be something that council wishes to discuss again next week when we have more information and provides context to that decision to defer the general tax increase for the year that we would normally have, you know, a kind of CPI increase in favor of, this is a much more targeted program of relief. So we can do both, nothing saying we can't, but we'll have more information next week. I just wanted to acknowledge it on the revenue side.
All right. Anything else?
Mayor, just one thought.
Go ahead.
Mayor, sorry, the, the question is, are we intending to break out the fire rate out as a subset and break that out of the tax rate from, from an illustration perspective to, to the taxpayers? Is that, is that something we're going to do? Or, or is that just something we think we might get to down the road?
Mr. Wenzel?
Sure, I'll speak on that. Based on the upcoming projects, I think, I mean, I know, like, say, MODL, I pay a tax rate and there's also a fire tax rate on my tax bill. And I think that, given the projects coming down the line, it might be beneficial to break those rates out if council are in agreement with that suggestion, just because it provides more of an insight into the drivers behind the tax rate increase in certain costs and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
But we currently do not. It's just showed as one lump sum tax rate.
Okay. I, it, it would seem to me that, that those issues are issues for another discussion. I think tonight, we are merely trying to address the proposed budget that we received last week and what council would see as including or not including in that budget.
Anyway, I'd agree. I think it's a good thing to come back to you before the final version of the budget. So maybe we talk about it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, it is just how the final budget motion is constructed. And it can reference a general rate or it can reference a general rate and a fire service rate. So that'd be on the.
Yep. And though, though, I think those will be discussed and decided in the future. Mr. Wenzel, you want to proceed, please?
Sure thing. We'll move along. The next section of the budget document is the General Government Services Expenditure section. So I'll open the floor to any comments from council on this section.
Well, all right. No comments?
Okay, so we'll move along.
Could you give us the page number as well, please?
Absolutely. So the next section is on page 25.
In the General Government, is that where we've got the grants and low income?
That would be back here, yes. So right here on page 21, we've got the tax rebate budgeted increase.
So I just wanted to take a moment here with Council and discuss the the grants allocation. Just in light of the discussion that we, well, the presentation that touched on, we have increased the grants allocation here. So the previous year, you'll see the grants allocation is 4,000. And this year, which effectively combines grants organizations and the line below town contribution, $10,000 total represents a pretty significant increase over the previous year's 4,000. And when we were discussing it, we were looking for some direction from Council on whether we would be allocating $4,000 of it or an amount that could be determined by Council to the round of applications received by the deadline. And whether there would be any appetite for reserving some of this for additional relief having to do with COVID-19 impacts. So the reason I'm asking at this stage is that we, as you know, next week on May 5th, we will be discussing the grant allocation, so we'll be sending out the package of grant applications that we received. And prior to seeing it, I wondered if Council wanted to comment on the appropriate maximum that you were allocating to that. Or, you know, obviously, if you'd rather review the applications and then determine that. But it just may change Council's evaluation of it, so I wanted to bring it up now.
I think we should wait and see the list and then we can make a decision on the list.
I'd like to speak to.
Counselor Carver?
Yes, thank you. CIO, could you say something about the kind of applications that you think might come in after the deadline that are related to COVID-19?
Oh, well, so I'm mostly based then on what has been done in the municipality of District of Chester to date. So they put out a call, they did, you know, they have the regular grants money, but they allocated a certain amount for grants specific to relief for COVID. They put out a call to nonprofit organizations to demonstrate that they had had an impact in terms of the loss of fundraising capacity, were having difficulty paying their bills, and then allocated a maximum amount to each applicant. And whether that's a preset maximum or a maximum based on the number of applications received and how that could be spread around. The key there was that they they took an amount, you know, allocated that specifically only for that purpose, separate from the applications received on the annual grants to organizations.
Okay, Counselor now. Unmute John or Richard?
That's better.
Yep.
A question on the employee charitable donation is town contribution. So how is that working? I mean, I'm not sure that we should be contributing through the town for employee donations. How's that work? Is that a matching thing or is?
That that policy is on the agenda for the next council meeting. Counselor now, I had the same question, frankly, when I was reading through it today, but it might be inappropriate at this point to discuss that until such time as Council may choose to support the proposed policy.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna mention that it is on the agenda on Thursday, so obviously subject to that, then we have the meeting on the 5th, there could be changes. But also just to note that the suggestion there, just for anybody who hasn't read it or is watching, was employee payroll deductions to United Way, which are currently something that is possible, could be encouraged by matching donations to the United Way. So it would only be a donation of up to $500 a year by Council to the United Way. And that would essentially be something for Council to consider if they're willing to allocate up to $500 a year to the United Way. And that's a discussion on Thursday.
That'll be on Thursday night. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Counselor now, CIO. Okay.
So does anybody have a suggestion there? I mean, if if Carol had one, so is that want to just leave it at the full amount and then we'll review the grant applications on Tuesday? Is that everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would I would agree to leave it at that full amount that's suggested in this document. But with the understanding that that is not a target. You know, we're not trying to give away X amount of money to grants. We will, in fact, look at the grant requests that come in with the same vigor that we would normally look at.
And and should there be money left over? Then that is, you know, also available to do an additional round of applications for COVID.
And there may be COVID things that are yet to occur. Right? And we have to look at the impact of today's announcements from the provincial government on the 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 tax issue for people in the town, too. Okay, all right.
So the low income is also in here. And just so that we could do some additional work to support Council on this one, we talked about this last Thursday and we talked about essentially the options being to increase the eligibility level. So we could have a larger pool of money, could could go further to a greater number of people or to increase the the individual offsetting rebate so that it may not be a larger number of qualifying applicants, but they would receive a larger rebate. So I'm wondering at this time if Council has a preference or anybody would like to suggest an approach to that. It could be a bit of both, it could be one or the other, but Luke and I could provide numbers on that basis that might help Council's consideration.
Anyone? Counselor Carver?
Yeah, I I would like to see it be a bit of both, more people and slightly increased amount.
Okay. Counselor Feeny?
So, I mean, I think it's, I think that number is going to be really correlated to our, like, our long-term trends. So, you know, to go from, you know, eight, 8,000, you know, two years ago to 10,000 this year to jump to 20 would really require the policy to be changed as far as the amount of support per per individual that will qualify, unless the amount of people that would qualify, you know, really spikes. And, you know, my sense of things is that that's not necessarily the case, so. I mean, thematically, I think we would all would want to support that type of an initiative, but like, if you look across every single one of these line items, every line item is higher than last year's line item and materially higher than the year before. And that theme just cascades page after page after page after page to the point, you know, when you when you look at the entire pool, you know, you've got a 13 and a half percent increase of expenses in one year. At the same time, your revenue is down 7%. So that which forces the staff to request for money to be transferred out of capital into into operating so that we can fund all of these things. Which means every dollar of out of the capital reserve is really $3 of capital projects we don't actually do. So you take out $150,000 out of capital, it's not 150, it's 450 of projects you don't do.
Assuming you get matching funds.
Assuming you get matching funds, which has been, other than the items we're well aware of that we don't get matching funds for, which is its own unique conversation, we're all well aware of. I mean, taking a dollar out of capital is $3 of project. So when I look at the overall expense budget, and I think, you know, most of the Council is probably in the same place I am, is looking at it and saying, we don't want to micromanage these things on a line-by-line basis, but when you look at the entire portfolio of expenses, like, if we have big, big operating expense increases, and we can talk about the merits of every single line item, but it really comes down to, can you afford to increase your expense budget by $360,000 in one year? And what about the year after that? Are we going to increase it by another 300 next year and the year after that? Another, you know, so where we all know we're well, well, we're well adverse to debt, but you know, anyway, you get the point.
Mr. CEO?
Oh, I just, I think that's a good point. I just wanted to, for some clarification, the increase from the previous year's budget amount here in low income and the grants as well are part of and deferring the general tax rate increase that we would normally see are all part of a proposal in this budget related to COVID-19. So as far as an increase to $20,000, yes, it would require a policy amendment, but the intention would be it would be a one-time amendment having to do with this particular year's situation. And yes, exactly, you're correct, if Council did not increase that, left it at 10,000, that would be an operating reserve transfer that would be reduced because as part of the COVID relief package that's presented in this budget, that's actually an operating reserve funded initiative. So just wanted to agree, but also connect some of the dots for people.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, were you going to speak?
I wasn't, but I will. I think if you look at our rebate for low income, we have one of the highest, if not the highest, in the South Shore.
I believe you're correct.
Yep, so I mean, you know, the citizens are taken well care of, too. I I don't know, I have a little problem with the law and Counselor Feeny on this one because our numbers are higher than a lot of the communities around us, so.
Okay. Counselor O'Neill? No? Okay.
All right, Luke, take it away to the next section, I think.
Sure thing. So we'll move along to page 25, which is Protective Services. Nothing too much here, but I'll open the floor if anybody has any questions. Counselor O'Neill?
Luke, will you be taking this page by page or section by section at this point?
At this point, I was planning on doing a section by section, but we can go page by page if that's what Council would like.
No, I just wondered, there was something from the meeting the other day that left me a little, I guess, confused, and I'd like more information about it on page 26, the firefighting force honorarium. I noticed has gone up from 12,000 to 16,800 to $4,800 increase. And, you know, I I feel comfortable with increases to honorarium for the for our firefighters. I I prefer that those are tagged to indexes. And the footnote that was given here for the reason for that large increase was not actually a new tax, but an oversight. And I wasn't sure the way that it was written, whose oversight it was that that individuals are not, I guess, paying taxes on the honorarium. I wondered, was it a town issue that we were not issuing T4s or was it some combination? Or could you give me some more detail on that?
I can only go back so far just because I am relatively new at the town. But I know since before I started, it was always the check was just basically cut to the fire department. They cashed the check and then the money was distributed within the fire department. It's basically, I don't know if it was checks or cash, I'm not sure, but based on my research, it should have all been done on T4 slips. So it's not really a new thing, it's just something that was not done in the past. As to why, I can't really answer for that. But it's just something that wasn't done that I saw that should be done, so that's why I've made this adjustment in the 2020-21 budget.
Okay.
And the principle behind that adjustment is that, you know, the firefighters end up with the same honorary in their pocket. I'm presuming it was Council's intention and an oversight, then we would want to leave that take-home honor area the same.
Okay, but we don't know if some firefighters indeed had been claiming that on their income tax statements. There's, I just wondered kind of what went wrong, I guess.
I mean, I guess technically if they wanted to report like a cash payout on their taxes with no official tax slip, I guess they could report it as other income. I mean, I can't really speak to every individual firefighter that received it, but I mean, honestly, if you're getting a lump of cash in your pocket, you're probably not going to put on your taxes, but I can't really say for sure.
And we certainly can't say that we told them that they should either.
Yeah, no, that's what I was just trying to confirm. Okay, that's fine. I was just, I sort of was flagging that. It seems a bit irregular to me. I would, like I said, would rather take that to an annual honorarium increase that's flagged to an index. But I would look to staff to to take a look at that and and make a proposal on it, perhaps in the context of what other departments are doing. But for this year, I'm fine to have it stand.
Okay. Mr. Wenzel?
Okay.
Next page.
So we did move past page 25, which is Protective Services. I assume there were no other comments on that section.
Didn't see any.
Okay, so moving along here to where we were, page 26 is where it starts for Fire Protection Services. We've already discussed the honorariums there with Counselor O'Neill, so if there's any more questions in this section, please feel free to ask away.
No?
Okay. So we'll skip ahead now to page number 30, Other Protection Services. This is just basically where we've got some EMO, Remo expenses, fire protection, fire inspection, I mean, building inspection. Once again, these expenses are pretty standard year over year, but if there's any questions, we can certainly address those now.
No, don't see any.
Okay. So on page 31, we move along to Transportation Services. Any questions on this section?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, Luke, just one question on on the on page 31. Like, at what point, so when we're spending, you know, $15,000 in repairs on one truck and last year we spent 12, like, like, at what time does the, at what point does the business case become more, you know, more favorable if we just retire the old truck and buy a new truck? Again, there must be some, there must be some percentage of the asset. I'm assuming these trucks are big expensive trucks, like the 510 truck must be
Right, that's
$100,000 truck, right?
I'm not sure on the exact price on that. I mean, that is the big plow truck, so I can imagine it is a fairly expensive asset to buy. I mean, at this point in time, the Director of Operations isn't recommending that the expenses outweigh the new capital cost of a new truck, but I mean, I definitely see that's probably coming down the pipeline the next number of years, I would say, for sure.
When when you say repairs, does that also include things like, you know, new snow tires and all kinds, like anything to do with the maintenance of the vehicle?
That's correct.
It's not, okay, so it's not, you know, broken axle, it's basically total cost of running that vehicle for the year, oil changes, everything else, right?
Yeah, okay, correct.
Yeah, I wanted to comment, I do think we're getting towards the end of that vehicles to to the point where it will be worth looking at, but because it is used heavily in winter maintenance, even a brand-new vehicle will have a pretty significant amount of winter maintenance just from the wear and tear.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
No worries. So we'll
Nothing else? Next page, sir.
Okay, page number 38 is the start of our next section, which is Environmental Health Services, which is basically our sewer treatment section. Are there any questions on this?
Sorry, the only question on this was around. So, am I, I'm reading this right? Two, two years ago, our costs were 40,000. Last year, our costs were seven, were 40,000, but this year, we think it's going to be 74,000? In the sewage collections?
Yeah, I see what you're looking at.
Likes.
I can jump in on that for a sec there, because there's a couple of operating initiatives in there. The engineering consultants has to do with the affluent study that was going on last year. I'm not sure why there's nothing in year to date to the end of the year. We certainly did spend some money on that. We also received some external funding from PCAP as well. So this may have been moved, is that why it's got nothing here, Luke?
Yeah, because we
Yeah, okay, that's what the note says, isn't it? Yeah, thank you. But so it's appearing in the budgeted columns, it's not appearing in the in the actual columns. So we just wanted to call attention that that's kind of distorting the actual to budget years.
So what what is that again? That is the engineering consultant cost that's in there that's unusual. Cost that's in there that's unusual.
Yeah, the thirty thousand dollar line that so if you took out the thirty thousand dollars for that year, we would have been talking about a budget of fifty seven. That came in at forty. And while that's good, it's not as much of a variance as what you were referring to. So that's, that thirty is a capital project now is classified as.
Okay, so, but I mean, just like honestly, when I, when I look at that page, I mean, this is kind of the theme. The theme is a fifty percent increase in cost in this space year over year. And I know some of it might be tactical one time, but every line, every line item well.
I can speak to the engineering line for the twenty 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 one budget of the twelve thousand four hundred. That is a amount that we have stuck in there for a rate study per se. Just to look at possibly creating a sewer rate and that's sort of a one time cost. In this category to see what would be looking at if we looking at, you know, possibly doing the utilization of the wastewater side. Also down. Or sorry, above that, we've got another five thousand, basically sewer staff benefits. This is a new line item this year. Basically, if we're looking toward sort of trying to. Capture all of the costs going into the wastewater treatment side of things. We're trying to now reallocate some of those costs into this actual sewer system off of just the general administration finance. So that is another five thousand there that wasn't there in prior years that we're just sort of trying to more accurately reflect where staff times being spent.
Yeah, okay.
So it's not necessarily, it may have shifted from another part of the budget.
Like if we're, if we're going to, if we're gonna shift allocations, then we should shift actual so that. So that you can see the material, the year over year trend. Right? Like you should, we should have shifted the last year, we should have restated last year's audit numbers. Anyway. Move, move along. The other, the other point is.
Could we actually make that change perhaps? Sorry, Joe, but I was just thinking with the the next version of this, could we correct that?
We should be able to, definitely be a bit of work on the backend, but it should be possible. I think one of the main reasons why we didn't, or at least why I didn't, was I didn't know if that was more of a. Set change or if that was still a change to be, you know, addressed on that is the way that council wanted us to move. So at my perspective, it's more of a recommendation that this is what we start doing rather than this is what we actually are doing.
But I think if we accept the recommendation, then the final version of this budget would want to have that information in the unaudited.
Yep, we can definitely make that change.
I think the only other point Mayor I'd make on this page, and this is kind of illustrates, I think reiterates the point again, is that. There needs to be consistency. So we're taught, and like I applaud the, the, the idea of increasing the reserve, establishing a new reserve for pump replacement. Which is an expense item. But again, we're taking money out of capital. To simply put into operating expense to fund an operating reserve. And like, hey, feel free to, feel free to establish the pump replacement operating reserve. The only thing you have to do is have an operating surplus. But if you don't have an operating surplus, it's pretty difficult to find an operating. An operating reserve. I mean, there's just, there's a disconnect of logic there that you'd say, hey, if we were running a three hundred thousand dollar operating surplus. Feel free to create a bunch of brand new, never seen before operating reserves. Fair enough. I'm totally one hundred percent on side. But if you're running an operating deficit, which we are in under this, this budget. If you're running an operating deficit, you can't fund brand new reserves at the expense of capital. Because it makes last night's two hour meeting kind of moot. No wonder everyone's worried about our, how we afford capital items. Well, one way to start reducing the concern is to stop robbing the capital piggyback. To find operating items. So like I'm with you spiritually. I'm just saying not this year, like I'm, I'm. I think we need to materially reduce the operating budget. Eliminate the transfer of that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And however we have to do, whatever we have to cut to get there, I think that should be the new base case, but that's just one opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
To reference that is about fifty thousand of what you're referencing, a cut would just be the tax increase that was projected. So that would also be something to be discussed in terms of that hundred and fifty because it is paying for that deferral of tax increase.
Well, or we can, we could pay for the deferral of tax increase by reducing expenses. Several ways to get at that.
That was my point exactly. Yeah, several ways to get at that.
Although I would suggest that we are again artificially trying to maintain our tax rate. And we've done that in the past and it's, it's come back to haunt us when we've done that. So I, it's something we're gonna have to discuss, yes. But I don't necessarily see the, the, the tax rate, tax rate as sacrosanct.
Fair enough, fair enough, Mayor. I agree and, and but, but this council's raised taxes, the tax rate three years in a row. We can't have thirteen percent operating expense increases year after year. I mean, that's just not. So I think to be fair, and you know, you've, you've led on this item and I think councils unanimously supported, all the councils. Have always unanimously supported appropriate tax measures. We've done that. You know, to the, to the entire council's credit, but at some point you have to stop spending. And a thirteen percent operating expense increase in one year in the middle of a COVID pandemic crisis. I say, if we're gonna have any, any reason why we would, we would tighten the purse strings. This is, if we don't tighten the purse strings this year.
Yeah.
When we're not, when no one's leaving their home.
What, when, when you find yourself in a hole, what do you do? You stop digging. I absolutely agree with you, Counselor Feeny. And I think that's something that we need to be pursuing is how to reduce that, those operational expenses. That we may have planned now. If we can keep the tax rate constant, let's do it, but let's do it the right way. Mr. Wenzel?
Sure. So are there any more comments on this section?
Okay, don't see any.
Okay, so starting on page forty three, we've got public health and welfare. This is a pretty generalized. Not much control over this section. The deficit regional housing amount is pretty much mandated to us. And the cemeteries, that's basically just the operating expenses budgeted for the cemetery's upkeep.
Is that regional housing? That's, is that the, the properties that we support with the province?
Yes.
On, on Chirling, okay.
Yep. Moving along to page forty four is the start of environmental development services. Any questions or comments on this? Counselor Neil? You're a mute.
There should be three ways, three ways to unmute that and only one works. Just a real quick question. I meant to ask this the other night. So my apologies. Under other environmental services, we've got in the past. Under tourism, we have actuals and budget of, you know, seven to eleven thousand dollars. And this year we've got three hundred dollars budgeted if, if I'm reading that correctly. Can you just give me some background on that?
I could, but I'm going to have to look into that number because I'm pretty sure that's a typo. That I did not catch in my initial review.
I feel for a tourism town, that number is low, was my comment.
Absolutely agreed.
If I, if I may comment, the, the note that I made on my copy in relation to that was that it was felt that there was gonna be a drop. Because of COVID.
There certainly will be a projected drop, but that's definitely not the right number that should be in there.
Yeah, I think that was in the, the number below in the public comfort stations.
Yes.
This tourism numbers to MB, is MBTCC, right? Is that?
Yeah, to support various initiatives and stuff around the town.
Yeah, so that, that is just a typo.
Yep.
You know what the number it should be?
Not off the top of my head because I'm sure that's what's in my spreadsheet, so I'll have to go digging at my backup files and pull that in.
Ten thousand dollars a year. So it just, the actual may have been shown as different, but I think the budget, it would have been ten thousand.
Okay. So we'll see that at our next session as the actual number and you can flag that for us.
Yep, I'll get that updated.
Great, thank you.
Not the direction we want those errors to go in right now, is it, Joe?
Well, fair, fair enough. I mean, I think everyone's doing their best job trying to. You know, do the right thing by the citizens. Do you think Dylan, and I guess Counselor Carr would chime in too, based on the initiatives around the accessibility act? About, it's clear we're gonna have to do something as it relates to accessibility. What, what are we denoting here? With this twenty five thousand dollars versus say the hundred thousand dollars for the town hall? Which may or may not be part of the accessibility agenda as well. What, what are we, what are you getting out there, Dylan and Luke on, on that line item?
Yeah, I can definitely speak to the accessibility initiatives here because this is a bit conjectural. So as you're right, this is an operating reserve initiative. Essentially, the, the town, as you know, has joined, you're the representative to the committee, has joined the rest of the county and. An accessibility committee and that accessibility committee's work plan for the year essentially involves spending. First half of the year up until September, developing. Standards which would be universally applied throughout the county. And it would be up to each individual unit by March thirty first of twenty twenty one. To produce a operational plan document that would essentially say how those standards would be applied and include. Updating of our municipal specifications. So this number is probably exaggerated. I certainly also believe that it may be possible to receive external funding and we are looking at that. On top of that. There is a currently where we're working with CBCL on the transportation plan. I have asked them for quotation, but we don't have a quotation on this yet. In part because it's just such a developing area where the province was supposed to release. Their built accessibility guidelines in April and they have not yet to my knowledge. So this twenty five thousand dollars is for the development and operational plan by March thirty first. And I think we'd come back as usual with a staff report to council, hopefully having obtained, you know, better quotation opportunities. To identify external funding and I could certainly see this number being as low as ten thousand dollars by the end of the year. But I would advise council that at this time it is something coming. It's gonna be a legislative requirement. And we will require outside engineering assistance. So. This is probably the most conservative estimate that I could put in there, but as an operating reserve transfer. You know, wouldn't be spent until we are at that point and we've come back to council and gotten authorization.
In my sense of things in that, as you and I and Counselor Carr have been at these accessibility meetings. I mean, I think the progress has been substantial and it's moving in the right direction. And I do think, I would, I would have hoped that we would have seen as it relates to that requirement to develop that plan. We would be doing that in collaboration with our, our other municipal partners. Or maybe even potentially through the joint services board or so. I was hoping that we were gonna get a kind of a, an integrated regional based plan and we would be paying our, say nine percent of the total sticker price.
I would be hoping that too. But it looks, unfortunately, the way it's been split off, the operational plan is gonna be each unit's responsibility. We may be able to combine for tender, but the other units do have in-house engineering expertise. So we may be somewhat at a disadvantage in that if they go in-house to do this plan.
Right. Well, we'll, 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 we'll see where it goes. I, I would recommend that, that we might want to moderate that number for this year. Or push some of it in the next fiscal year, given where we are in the year, but anyway, I'll leave that with, with you.
No, I think that's totally reasonable. I mean, at the end of the day, we have to get something done. What we get done could be dictated by the budget available.
Okay. Mr. Wenzel, what's next?
Oh, I think Counselor now had a question.
He did. You're gonna wave herder, Richard.
I guess my hand's not big enough. I just want to come back to the tourism thing again with the three hundred there. How is the cancellation of the scarecrow festival this year going to affect our contributions towards tourism?
I mean, it will definitely impact, that's for sure. I can't say the exact amount right now. I mean, there's so many factors that go into that tourism line that. You know, the scarecrow festival is definitely a large portion of it, I would say. So that's definitely something we'll have to take into consideration for sure.
Okay.
Mayor, is that, is that worthy of conversation about whether it even makes sense to open? The comfort stations from a sanitation perspective, given the COVID situation? You know, I, I, I see as I drive around, like the, none of the restaurants or even like the, the Irving, for example. Has closed their public washrooms and. I, I certainly don't say that with any glee, but I'm wondering just from a liability to the town perspective, like is there? Is, is it worthy of consideration that maybe we, we won't be in a position to open the bathroom just to me? Because of the amount of sanitation that would be. You know, appropriate, given the circumstances.
We may in fact not be, I think it's something that CAO and his public works people are. And monitoring on a fairly regular basis. Are we gonna get a nod from the provincial government or will the borders be open? Can we expect the tourists? We have monies in this budget to do some, some work on those facilities, which could be done whether. The users show up or not, but certainly the operational costs, the cleaning contract costs. May in fact not happen. And unfortunately, the province right now has got us staring at the long weekend in May. Because there's gonna be decisions taken by them. And perhaps they would open. But CAO would. Is that pretty well where we're at with it?
Yeah, I think I would generally agree. I would add that I, I don't believe that there's any possibility of an opening in May at this time. But we have suggested to the. Chamber of Commerce that we would require some lead time for reactivation of utilities, getting that building. V I C building up and running and the washroom buildings up and running, washroom buildings. May have reduced hours if they have increased janitorial responsibilities. We may need to balance those two factors. So a lot of things are up in the air, but I would say I'm, I'm not expecting it before June first. Even if we got the word now, it will, it will take about a month, well, three, three weeks minimum to make all the necessary preparations.
Even without the changes in the facilities.
And if we do have reopening, it's, it's bound to be with some precautionary changes in the facilities. You know, we haven't gone around installing plexiglass yet, but I don't think that you're going to see any front counters without plexiglass in the rest of twenty twenty, to be honest.
Okay. All right. Nothing else? On we go.
Sounds like a plan. So starting on page forty seven, we move on to recreation and cultural services. Are there any comments on this section?
Anyone? Everyone's happy with it.
Okay. Moving along to page fifty one, this is just the education contribution which is mandated. And our debt principal installments for the year.
Sorry, Mayor, I just had one question on forty eight. Counselor Carr, is the line item for the heritage properties, is that a funding? On page forty eight, is that the heritage grant and the placking? Is that what we're? That, that looks a little high. Council dealt with one of these items last week, didn't we? And last council meeting, is that where that, is that the line item where that grant gets funded from?
Yes, I was just made aware of that decision and that is where that grant would land in the budget, yes.
Counselor Carr, just for refreshment, I, I can't recall that number being, I thought it was more like a thousand dollars versus twenty five hundred. What, what are your thoughts?
I, I think that amount covers other things as well, like sometimes the committee itself incurs expenses.
Okay, fair, fair enough.
And what about the honorarium for the researcher?
That must come there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. That I just, it's a bunch of things in that category. Yeah, okay. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Okay.
So onto the next page, we page fifty two, which just sort of shows a high level. So onto the next page, we page 52, which just sort of shows a high level summary of various transfers between funds for the year.
Right.
Special Reserve Care.
And that transfer to the operating reserve of 231, that is detailed here on page 53 to show what all, so we've got 119,000 for various operating initiatives. 15,000 to offset the one or the election cost, which that's not a regular recurring expense. And then the various COVID-19 impacts that we have put in within the budget. And then would need to offset by about $50,000 or so if tax rates were to stay stable.
But Luke, what I'm trying to understand on that page is like a number of those items aren't for operating initiatives. Right? Like so that, like the, you know, the like the deed transfer tax, like that was never intended to go to expense. So essentially what we're saying is that we're running a, we're making a decision to run an operating deficit and we're going to fund the cash deficit by take stripping money out of the capital reserve.
I mean, I guess in this case here, like on your point, that is something that I didn't really think about when I was doing this up, like we could remove this $20,000 deed transfer deficit from this equation and reduce our required transfer from the operating reserve by the $20,000.
You could do that with all of the ones that are reduction of, so the deed transfer, the vendors permits and the tax increase, they're all doing the same thing. They're all shoring up an anticipated one-off reduction in our revenue. And at the end of the day, because we did run an operating reserve suppliers or an operating fund surplus last year, you know, there is some money in the operating reserve. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we need to use it all. And if we don't use it all, then we don't need to put money in from capital. So that's, I think that's a potential strategy there.
Councilor Feeny?
Well, I mean, you know, I won't, I won't drone on about the theme here. I, I, I just, when I, when I, I think Councilor Carr asked the question, like what, what are the civil, what, what does the community, what do the citizens think they get when they pay these various fees? When someone moves to town and they pay their deed transfer tax, costs of doing business, when they'll move here, you got to pay the deed transfer tax. Entry, entry level fee, come on in, 1.5%. That goes to support the infrastructure, the infrastructure charge. I think there's a, a level of trust that people are going to get what they pay for. They pay that three, that $295, they're going to see it somewhere. And I'm not talking about $15,000 worth of paint on the road. Like they're going to physically see something that they can look at, a tangible asset that they can see. And I think that's, I think that's the commitment that, that the, this and older and past councils or councillors have made are around that. So I'm a little worried that what we've really got, the really, the situation is we don't want to raise taxes because we're in the middle of a pandemic and we think that the the citizens can't bear the pain. Fair enough. I'm with you there. But we're really talking about running an operating deficit. And how are we going to finance it? And all I'm saying is I'm prepared to do that and not raise taxes because I think that's the right thing to do. But I don't want to spend one cent that we don't have to spend unless we have to spend it, it's going to drive an operating deficit. If you're going to be spending on your credit card, at least make it the things we absolutely have to have. Anyway, that's. Anyway, that's the point. And I, you know, I don't want to belabor anymore of the meeting with that rant, but I'm a little worried.
That's, that's Joseph's commercial. Okay, Luke?
Okay. So we'll skip ahead. Whoops, a little too far here. On page 54, this is the beginning of the water utility statements.
And you're probably safe to just do all of the water utility questions.
At one time, the wa, the water utility doesn't find its way into our town budget.
No, it's a standalone.
It's a self-supporting, yeah.
The only places where you'll see them combined is in the operating initiative sheet, and that's just because that sheet is provided to provide you with a high level of detail on initiatives that may be such as asset management going across different departments. But what you'd see is you'd see in the water budget, the portion of that operating initiative relating to water. And you'd see in the general budget, the portion of that initiative relating to the general and just on the operating sheet, you see it consolidated into the single item to see the overall project budget.
Okay. Is everyone happy with that water utility piece? Move, move on to.
The only point I'd make, Mayor, is we're selling less water, volumes of water are down 1%, costs are up. And it's, I think it's mostly subscribed to the, the huge spike of costs around chemicals. And Luke, you know more about this than I do, but based on the, the detailed Q and A that you sent out to council, I mean, that chemicals and fertilizers, that was a $30,000 item three years ago, then it was 40, then it was 50, now it's $67,000. So there are reasons why that is, but 30,000 in year one of council to 67,000 in year four of council? Whoa. So is that going to be a hundred thousand dollar line item in three hours to now? Or maybe we should go to tender or do an RFP or get together with Lunenburg and buy in bulk, but we got to do better. Like we've got to reduce these costs.
And I commented on that once a little bit, about $10,000 of that increase in cost is that we have to now pay for shipping the drums back to the suppliers. Which is sort of a new policy, I'll call it, I guess. It's a fee that we never really had to pay before. But that's something, that's why our actual results are about, well, they're about $8,000 higher than our budget for last year was because of those shipping fees. So that's once again factored into the increase in this year and also the water plant.
Why are those being shipped back as opposed to disposed of otherwise? Is it because we can no longer dispose of them otherwise? Or were they previously taking them and just not charging us?
Uh, when we ship them back, I am like 99% sure that we actually get a credit on our account for the return of the drum so that they can be reused. So there is a cost.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah. So there's revenue offsetting $10,000 of this, is what you're saying.
Yeah. Um, and then the other thing is that the waste or the water plant operators also ordered one extra order of chemicals to have on hand in case of like a disaster or something, just so that we have some extra chemicals on hand.
You know, we changed our, our practice around the ordering and actually it's interesting. It's, you know, right now we have a particular situation, but it was the rail disruptions that happened earlier this season that actually were causing a number of the water and waste plants to run low on chemicals. And that actually is where we looked at the increase in our chemicals on hand.
So I guess to answer just sort of Joe's question there, I don't expect this increase to be a continuing trend. I think this is sort of our general, like the 66.9 is what we're looking at for this year. And then basically from there, we're just going up with the inflation cost of chemicals, I would say.
But that point about joint procurement was a great one. And that's, you know, why we were supporting and joint procurement initiative through MJSP and as council knows, that has been deferred now for consideration for next year. But I think that's a good option, looking at the other waste treatment, water treatment systems in the county, and maybe there are some options.
Time's ticking on here this evening, but when we're buying that much chemical and, and expecting to have, let's call it 15, $20,000 of chemical stored on site, like are those things stored in, are they stored in a locked location? Do we have all of that under? Do we have inventory control back in the day when we are running, you know, $1,000 with the inventory, no big deal. And now we've got 20 or $30,000 of inventory. Assuming that's something that the CO, that the, the Derek's all over.
It's, it certainly is a locked facility. It has a locked gate and, and a locked building. But there is further in this, in this budget somewhere in the capital proposal that would see a, a security camera installed there as well, or a couple if we wanted as another security measure. I guess I'll also note that reselling these chemicals is probably not easy. We'll ask V if she's getting anybody with some chemicals that fell off the back of the truck.
Yeah, fair enough. At least we're making money in the utility.
Can we move past the electric utility the same way we did the water?
Sure.
Or is there something in particular, C A O, that you'd like to note in the, in the electric utility?
I only had two, one little note. I just had one little note, just because when Luke was going through this last Thursday, we noticed and it was quite late in the meeting that the operating initiative sheet was cut such that it was missing a column on source of funds. So I just wanted to note that there, there has been a shifting in the way that the climate and energy initiatives or greenhouse gas reduction initiatives are done in here. And we have based looking back on the time that's been spent and where we're going in the coming year and how advantageous these initiatives are to the utility around getting electrification initiatives and home heating and vehicular electrification. So we've actually shifted such that 75% of the operating costs associated with those projects are within the electrical utility and 25% on the town. That is, you know, at the end of the day, our electrical utility really is lacking in staff at the, at the sort of high level. So when we participate with area, we're supporting the work of area. Working closely on the development of solar projects, on home heating projects and that kind of thing, on the heat pump program that we've been working on for this past year. You know, that is a lot of that work in this year is Catherine and I are doing that work because the electrical utility staff or field staff, they're out in the field. So increasingly, I think a lot of the work for the electrical utility looking forward is going to be about growing the load and bringing in additional revenue through electrification initiatives. And I think it's very advantageous for the utility to support those initiatives. So that's something that we're doing along with the other units in area, but I wanted to call attention to it. Because that's not referenced in the utility, in the operating initiative sheet.
Now, as these initiatives in, in the utility, is that where we will find the, the EV charging and the EV car program?
Yeah. So those, the, the, the capital portion is not necessarily utility cost. But the operating associated with the new EV chargers and the setup of them and all of that, yeah, that's, that's in the utility.
Okay. Well.
I mean, Mayor, so the only point I make, if you flip back to page 66 is if you look at the top line, direct kind of gross margins are really improving, as you can see, as our purchasing power, as our power costs are, are materially dropping. You know, 1.6 million to 1.5 million to 1.2 million on the back of the import decision that was made last year. Good news, great news. You know, we're $400,000 more profitable to that point in the income statement than we were three years ago. That is a huge amount of money. Now we're choosing to take that, that money has to show up, like that import has to happen, right? We have to get those benefits, but let's just say we do. We're, we're choosing to, we, we, the, the utility has never been in a position where the cert, there's been enough surplus operating income to distribute a dividend back to the town. Um, and I think as this, as this is prepared, we're seeing that all of this improvement in operating margin is being used to fund projects within the utility. So fair enough. I think all of those projects may have a lot of merit. But like at some point, we made, you know, we need the utility to generate a dividend to pay back to the town so we can fund things like a fire hall or the storm sewage improvement or the, the, you know, a climate mitigation strategy on the waterfront. And all I'm suggesting is that what we don't have today that we may want to think about is a dividend policy discussion. At some point, we need a way, a mechanism to get dollars from the utility back into the town coffers.
I, I wonder what the perspective of the U A R B would be on our next request for a rate increase? If in fact our electrical utility was declaring a, a bonus to the town, which we were then going to use on non-electric utility expenses.
C A O? Yeah, no problem. Way below our, our mandated regulator rate of return.
Sorry, I ended up on mute there. I just wanted to, yeah, thank you. Just wanted to address that. I think it's a very, it's a very good point by Councilor Feeny is, you know, at what point could or can the utility potentially do that? And one of the items that is in here, that is an operating initiative within the electric utility, speak of the devil, is a a rate study project within the electric utility where we would utilize Al Domini, and that would be Riverport's looking at the same thing. Berwick's actually just been working on it again, using Al. And the thought there is that, you know, that rate study will look at where things are going with imports and these margins and whether there is a possibility, and you know, Al's extremely knowledgeable about the regulator, to build in any kind of dividend. And also I think, you know, just to address the fact that costs within the utility that, that are aimed at, you know, growing the load within the utility. And, and, you know, replacing transformers and doing appropriate maintenance, that kind of thing. Is the first thing that the U A R B would prefer to see money go to. And then over and above that, you know, potentially this, we're looking at dividend or, or rate alteration. But certainly, you know, the reinvestment within the utility, especially where we have not, you know, to, to councillor Feeny's point, always been in a position to afford to do significant reinvestment in the utility. It is giving us the opportunity to do that. And I know that the MAP funding will allow us to better target that. So we're actually planning to get out this coming month in socially distanced, just one individual in the field and go around and do some better inventory of those transformers that we can have a really detailed replacement plan around the transformers now that we're starting to be able to not just cross our fingers and hope that all the transformers make it through the year. So. But yes, I think that rate study will be key to better understanding that question in the long term.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, Luke, on we go.
We'll go right ahead. So here on page 70 is the Park Cemetery operating budget, followed by the Bayview Cemetery operating budget on page 71. Once again, there's not too much excitement going on there, but if there's any comments here, we'll take that at this point. Okay, I'll move along.
Yep.
Page 72, we start the status of town funds page. Here on page 73, sort of gives a detailed breakout and like I commented earlier on your revised package, the capital reserve balance as of March 31st is more like 700 and I don't know the exact number here, but over $700,000. So that will be corrected on your revised document sent out to you before the May 5th meeting.
Luke, one, one edit on the Park Cemetery, would you mind just putting an asterix there and denoting the payable from, from the water utility in your next version? Just so that the council can appreciate that the Park Cemetery perpetual care fund is a blend of that cash balance plus some receivable that's due over the next four years from the water utility?
Yep. No, we can definitely factor that in there, Joe.
Yeah. I just think for completeness, it will help.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll move along. On page 75 and 76 are the two pages of the special projects, operating initiatives that are budgeted for the year that to show prior year costs, current year costs, and also future year costs, if they exist for various projects.
And the budgeted revenues and expenditures for these, like we were saying, are drawn from the town general revenue and operating utility revenue and operating, depending on the project.
Item number seven, the town website update. C A O, is that part of the contract?
Yes, that would, so that's already tendered, but this would be the, the cost anticipated. So within that.
Okay.
Oh, I can't speak to it in open council here in any more detail right now, but just so the council knows it was referenced in your staff report to Thursday night's meeting. If you've gotten through that yet, already getting a lot of those from us lately. The, the anticipation is that we will have a recommendation on the municipal planning strategy item, project at the meeting on May 5th. So prior to finalization of this budget, we will be able to have a final number for that. And so it's 120,000 spread over two years was the budget. But I will tell you, it's, it's likely that we will have a number that is less than that. And we will hopefully have that set as if council's good to award on that recommendation. So just wanted to let you know that will be happening within the span of this budget process.
Okay.
Cause we've already gone tariff fee.
It's, it's 8:30. It's it's eight thirty. We've been at this now for ninety minutes. Would you consider pressing on for another thirty minutes and see where it gets us? Or if we.
I would.
Okay, let's motor on.
Great. Sure thing. Jumping ahead to page seventy seven is the start of our capital budget. Section, starting on page seventy eight, this is where the town capital budget begins. And then we go down through various town capital budget items through to the water utility and then ending on the electric utility. Are there any comments or questions on any of the capital items in this document?
Is the fifteen thousand on the bandstand? Is that leftover from our centennial? Budget piece, work still to be done or?
That actually does represent a new project. If you remember back to the bandstand report when we named it the Memorial Bandstand and we started to receive some donations. There's a discussion at that time if we continue to receive donations. And can access seventy five percent external funding through the Canada Cultural Spaces Program? Would we be willing to do a phase three? We've had some requests from the users there around shade and lighting and some different improvements shade over the bleachers. Yeah, so that's what that is. And I think the the fifteen thousand was the external. So the projected town cost of five thousand would be partially donation supporting. So it could could be defrayed. I know we got about five thousand dollars in donations on the bandstand already.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselor now?
Yeah, I'm just wondering at the top of page seventy nine, expand the wharf comfort station. Is there any way we can? Tap into the Wooden Boat Festival Society for helping with funds towards that that they could up their rates as far as the storage and everything else down there. It's all the voters that are making, getting the use of the what we're putting on there. So I'm just wondering if there's any way of tapping into that and they can get a user pay type thing.
Yeah, we just have to reach out to them in that regard. I don't know what kind of charges they might associate with use of showers or laundry. So potentially, if this is revenue generating in some small way. For the marina, that could be remitted to the town to to help cover some of the costs. I don't know what kind of revenue might be able to generate.
Counselor O'Neil.
My comment was also on that item, and I wondered, given the situation that we're in, if this wouldn't be a topic that we would. Differ into the next budget year.
Based on the COVID activities, you mean?
Yes, and the expectation that the uptake for that comfort station would not be high in this fiscal year.
I just want to speak to that briefly if I can, just to kind of, I guess it's a counterpoint. I definitely don't mean it as a counterpoint, but. You're probably right that there will be less use of the washrooms in the fiscal year. On the other hand, if council means to do it this year or next. As a reserve funded or borrowed initiative, this year does present a good opportunity to get the work done. As the washrooms are currently closed. So just wanted to know kind of the upshot to doing the work in a year when we're not using the facility. Does make it easier for renovation, but take your point absolutely.
Counselor Bain. You're on mute, John. There.
No.
Yep, now.
Okay, yeah, I would agree with both of the comments because I don't think. Might be a good opportunity to do the work, but I don't think we're going to have the bus tours and the bus tours are pretty big users. Of that particular facilities. They walk the town and they end up there.
The bus tours far out strip the boaters when it comes to using the washroom facility.
Yeah.
Shower and the potential laundry thing would definitely be boater orientated.
Yeah, I I agree. I was just pointed out that I don't think we're going to have the bus tours. I support the notion. It might be a good opportunity to do the. Budgeted improvements there.
Okay.
Mayor Counselor Carver last night made a point. I've been thinking about since she made it around the cadence of. When we do our consultations around some of our initiatives versus when we make our decisions versus when we establish placeholders. So, you know, I think around the transportation plan was, I think, the point Counselor Carver was making last evening about. How it's it's a. It's difficult when you you put out a you put out a query to the community to respond, but then it. Before the community even has a chance to respond, it's already in the budget. So the more I think about that and the more I've talked to people in the last day or so. Including some people who are looking for stories. For CBC, I got that on Monday, next Monday morning about, you know, interesting new things that are going on around town. I wonder if. If maybe Dylan, you can talk to the virtues of the placeholder versus. In a situation where we have no idea if the matching money is going to show up or when it's going to show up, maybe we should just have a pool of money. And not be very as prescriptive about what that money is going to be used for until the public consultations actually occur. And we have the community weigh in on that and kind of learn the lesson of where we've been recent.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I think what you just said at the end, there really is the intention that this would be something that could move forward later in May, depending on the availability of funding and the status of consultations. But what I'd like to kind of caution is the, you know, what happens if there's no item in the capital budget around transportation initiatives? Because again, the council, of course, wants to hear from the community. But what we've been hearing from the community for the past two years, since I've been here anyway. Is that there are certain items, whether it's the one way street request for Cherry Lane, whether it's parental concerns around the safety of the Clearway and Main intersection. The council may very well want to be able to address in fiscal twenty twenty one. In fact, it was. Suggested that these items could be addressed sooner. And we we intentionally wanted to make sure that they were considered in the broader context of the transportation plan, which I think is the right thing to do. But upon the, you know, hearing of public feedback from the 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 transportation plan consultations. If council's not hearing any concern or objection around certain items such as the Cherry Lane proposal. And those are, you know, relatively straightforward to move ahead with. I I would certainly think that council wants to avoid a situation where a month from now. You're referring items to the twenty one, twenty two capital budget. So that I guess that's my concern. Obviously, understand the optics, people may be distrustful, even though it's very much intended to do the right thing. And at the end of the day, if council's all right with understanding that it would be a midyear inclusion of an item in the budget. It won't be reflected that in terms of looking at projections on the capital balance. You could just strike the item and then council could approve a capital project midyear, you know, a month from now, two months from now. There's no problem in in so doing. It's just that, you know, without projecting it in the budget. It's it's something that his council has a harder time accepting when it comes around. By virtue of a recommendation from the transportation plan process. So, you know, my suggestion and including it here is to say council has then an awareness of how that that amount of spending. And I think that's quite a bit more spending than we're likely to to take on in twenty twenty one under transportation. But how that would impact the rest of the budget. So that's the intention here and, you know, it's it's served as an educational function. Understand if council did end up feeling they need to be removed, I would just hope that council then, when we come back to it. Is is not going to be too concerned about adding a similar or I think much smaller expenditure. To deal with certain items that council, I believe, will wish to address in fiscal twenty twenty one, once we have gotten to that point in the transportation plan process.
Okay.
I hope that helped. I was trying to be quick, but.
If I consider what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing. And what I'm being told by citizens. This is going to be a relatively inexpensive line item, the transportation plan. You know, I'm hearing people that are very supportive of the crosswalks and the one way streets, those sorts of things, but. The major pieces of that transportation study. I find a lot of people are just kind of shaking their heads and saying. Where is this stuff coming from?
And then that was exactly the thought, Mr. Mayor, is that those were suggestions from residents. So many of them were suggestions that, you know, were very expensive, very dramatic. And council will have the opportunity to consider them. And if that's what you're hearing, and we have now heard over a hundred distinct responses that will be forwarded around the council fairly soon because the close the date just closed on that on that consultation. Then by the time we get to the end of this budget process. You will already, I think, be be having a very clear sense of where. You want to go with that transportation plan recommendations as will CBCL as their consultant. So it's a matter of the next few weeks.
If we leave these elements that we're seeing tonight here. There is no assumption that council is approving these expenditures. And I I look at the hundred thousand dollars for the EV car share. I haven't had a lot of people comment on it, but I've had some, a handful of people who are. Shaking their heads and saying, with all the things that we've got to spend money on. Why would we spend a hundred thousand dollars on that? I'm not saying it's good or it's bad. I think there's some environmental and G H T value to having that kind of data about a car share program. The question is whether the citizens want to foot the bill for it. So if we're saying that it's here. But it's still not carved in stone, we can change it at any time. Then.
So I I can address that. I wouldn't say we can change it at any time. What would happen with the transportation plan one? If we leave it in there is that once we conclude the transportation plan process. Then staff will will do a report to council saying, you know, within the established budget of a hundred thousand dollars. We we've got these recommendations that council has accepted as a part of the transportation plan process. We would like to proceed to apply for external funding to match these these the funding that council has put aside. And if we receive that external funding, then we would again come back to council and say, now we're going to go out and actually do the project. And that's the same model that was followed last year, say, with the transportation plan itself. Where we didn't get the external funding confirmation until February.
Okay. All right.
Oh, and just a correction on the EV car share pilot, just because I wouldn't want anyone watching to think we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar item there. What that that's a thirty thousand dollar town cost item in twenty one, twenty twenty one. And the proposal there is that, you know, while we would float an ambitious program with a couple of vehicles. That wouldn't move forward without external funding. And what we could do if we don't get external funding. Is obtain a single EV which would be used for in county corporate travel. And to be used as a car share for residents when not otherwise booked. So we just have a calendar. We book it and then residents would book it. So it's essentially scalable. If we got eighty percent FCM funding. Amazing, we could get four vehicles. We could have them out in the field at our charging stations. But if we didn't, a corporate vehicle, you know, it should be able to save between three and five thousand dollars a year in mileage costs. So. You know, realistically, I think would allow us the educational opportunity, but also would not have a significant overall cost. But anyway, that's. That's just some background on that project.
Anyone else? Counselor Feeny had his hand up first, Counselor Carver.
So I I I think back at our emergency town council meeting we had a little over a year ago. When we had to get together impromptu to respond to the timing of a federal government request for shuttle shovel ready projects. And at that time, council unanimously supported a number of initiatives that are still on this list. They were they were excellent projects then, and they're still excellent projects today. But the one missing ingredient, of course, is. The other governments supporting the projects. So they've had those applications for thirteen, fourteen months. We haven't heard a peep back. We've had the M L A and the M P at council. They've made presentations. No one's shown up with a check or any any notion of timelines around support. And what I'm left with is the fact that because. We are, I feel like we almost like lock ourselves into handcuffs because we have to commit our money. In. And wait with bated breath before with to our for our partners to come up and help us. And and given, given our conversation last evening. And having zero visibility on any. Support from the other layers of the government yet. No proposals in the hopper and it's already, you know, pushing May. I just wonder. I just wonder about the virtues of. Having line item approvals that says, okay, if someone comes forward with a project, we should jump on it versus. Just having a capital pool. And if an opportunity comes together, like, you know, we're only, we only live a hundred to. Three or four hundred yards away from town hall, we're all run down to a town council meeting at your call anytime, anytime him. Anytime Mister, the Prime Minister shows up with ninety three percent dollars.
Geez, I'll go.
Like, we'll go, right? We'll put our hands up. So. I'm a little worried that, given last night's conversation. How we can have. Two million dollars of the projects on this page.
It is a big question how you approach budgeting for the the projects where we're dependent on external funding to proceed. And we don't necessarily expect to receive that external funding this year, and it causes this huge distortion. Where we have, you know, a capital program that's exceedingly ambitious, but without any real expectation that some of it will forward this year. And and I mean, I think the main thing that you can do about that is, you know, moving. Project forward by a year and being ready to move them back into the current year if the situation changes. I would be just a specific note on the water waste water line projects. If we were looking to do that, we've already phased it. We broke, we've broken up the different sections. So. For example, you see the bottom of the page that's on the screen right now. Cherry Lane to Long Hill Road and Long Hill Road to Water Treatment Plant are two different items. It's the same project in two different phases. And I guess I would want to suggest there that. Long Hill Road to Water Treatment Plant is the first phase based just solely logically on coming down the hill from the treatment plant. But also it would be the phase of that project necessary to serve the new nursing home facility. And I do want to stress that. My understanding is there will be an effort, and I think we should be putting in an effort. To encourage the province to get on board with that project before it is too late to do so. And a quarter million dollars of costs have to be spent of their money on building system for that purpose to essentially to offset our project. At that facility. So one approach there might be to to leave the Long Hill Road to Water Treatment Plan in this year. And move Cherry Lane to Long Hill Road to next year. Doesn't necessarily address the shoreline project. I would say the same thing. The shoreline project is council can leave it in this year or move it ahead by a year. It's still on our ten year. It's still shovel ready. But it, you know, that distortion of the current year where we don't really have any concrete expectation of that project moving forward. But at the same time, you know. Do we want to give the signal that we don't intend to move that project forward? Obviously, that's not the case.
Okay. Any question? Counselor Carver, you had your hand up before.
Yes, thank you. I find that this list, it's rather difficult to navigate because it's just one item after the other with no sense of priorities. But that may be just me. But I do have a specific question about the solar garden development. Is that a time sensitive project? Is it important that we look at that for this year or could it be put off to to another year?
I'd say it's it's actually exceedingly time sensitive on two bases. So obviously, the external funding, the one point nine million dollars there. That's a Department of Energy of Mines program. It is using investing candidate infrastructure program money. So the three units within area are are talking, have been talking very closely with the department and federal partners for the past year. That money will be available once. So so the area units want to jump on that, obviously, for the solar garden projects in our communities. So that's somewhat driving in terms of the year now. Could it be shifted forward a year and still access that funding? Absolutely, that would be in coordination with the other area projects. We have the opportunity to potentially. Start work in Ananash or Berwick or Mahone Bay ahead of the other sites. The project could take place over a couple of fiscal years. So within that, there is flexibility around who starts first and in what fiscal year. But the application to the province being this year to get that external funding would be quite time sensitive. And then I also just wanted to add that on our end, the rationale for the project is actually quite time sensitive because the, you know, one of the primary rationales for this project, you'll all remember from Aaron's presentations to council. Has to do with investment by residents in in solar generation. You know, very inefficient investments in rooftop solar, causing the essentially. Rest of the community to subsidize the extremely high cost of that energy. About a thousand dollars for the rest of our residents for each home that goes with the rooftop solar and increased cost. So. This is also about prior to that investment, being able to give residents an opportunity to invest in the community option. To to buy an offsetting section of solar panels. And the advantage for the utility. Is that that section of solar panels is producing energy at a rate that's roughly one third the cost to the utility of a rooftop solar. So it's it's significantly advantageous to do now. Rather than after, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of money have been spent. I also want to stress that that investment portion really changes the town's hundred and seven thousand, hundred and seven hundred and three thousand dollar projection. Because essentially we go out and, you know, we borrow for that and we can borrow for that over ten or fifteen years. But we immediately begin to defray it by selling those. But we immediately begin to defray it by selling those, uh, panels. So we would, uh, quite possibly, if there's significant resident investment, it's dollar for dollar paying that back early if we want to. So that, you know, it's difficult to have extremely accurate projections around how much resident investment we may be able to capture. But if we got paid, say, back half of that amount, that would come immediately off of the outstanding cost of that project. So while it's upfront, i- it may be paid back quite quickly. In fact, uh, some places in the United States, and you know, it's everywhere, it's different, paid themselves back completely within a year. So as soon as they went out and they started selling it, uh, they had no problem selling it off. And we've been doing focus group testing and there's a lot of interest, but it's a fairly new concept in Nova Scotia.
Okay, um, yeah. Anyone else? Can, can Sir Carver? No? Is, is it possible, Mr. Hyde, that you, in consultation with, uh, with, uh, our finance manager and our works manager and the rest of your staff, assign some priorities to these project? Projects, as Councillor Carver suggested, is very difficult to look at, you know, three or four pages of line items, knowing that there's no possible way we can address all of them. But maybe to have a sense of what really is important imperative, you know, a high priority to be done in the, uh, 2021 fiscal year.
I, yeah, I mean, it gets, it gets a little bit, um, tricky for staff to assign a priority to items like the, um, for example, the expansion of the washrooms at the marina.
Okay.
Because that is an item coming in from an external request and it doesn't, it doesn't serve town operations at all. I think the biggest concern when you say we couldn't do all of these projects isn't the large number of projects, and many of them are relatively small or supported by external funding. But it's those few very large projects, you know, as Councillor Feeny mentioned. Um, I, I do suggest that if, you know, if the overall number, the staggering cost of these projects is too much, moving the, the, the projects that we have an intention to fund by investing candidate infrastructure program, uh, or at least those that don't relate to the nursing home project forward by a year, um, just to suggest that, you know, we're continuing to work on them. And at the end of the day, even if we get funding, it'll likely be at the end of the fiscal because that's how federal funding tends to come down. And that would really clear up a lot of the, like, the, the large volume of capital in 2021. It wouldn't get rid of the fact that there are a lot of small projects. But I would suggest that things like the wastewater PCAP plant affluent project, it doesn't need to be compared against the expansion of the washrooms. It, it, you know, it has its own purpose and its own funding.
So you would not be able to tell us, say, on the 5th of May, um, how you would rank these projects?
I mean, we can rank them in the form of projects that are recommended by staff and projects that are driven by an external request. If that would be helpful, so, um, uh, but I think, you know, it, it, it's very much a matter of preference. If the replacing the ball field backstop needs to be done and it hasn't been done for years, but council doesn't want to do it this year, then the ball field users will understand, you know, uh. So I, I mean, I can arbitrarily assign a priority order, but I just feel that, that we would be, we would be making assumptions around what is valued by residents that is really council.
I don't, I'm not sure how much value arbitrary is. Got Councillor Carver?
Uh, yeah, so, um, rather than making assumptions about what council or townspeople want, is it possible to highlight ones that are time-sensitive? So, so that, that would help me.
Yeah.
Or cluster them at the top of the list or something.
We could look at, uh, finding a way to denote the, the time sensitivity of projects. I mean, that doesn't have as much of a value judgment to say that if something came in from an external request, it may be less time-sensitive. Yeah, yeah, I think that may be an approach that we could take. Mr. Mayor, does that, would that help you as well?
Uh, it would, yes. Uh, you know, we, like I said, we've got four pages. There has to be some way to differentiate, you know, where the priority for the expenditures needs to be. Councillor O'Neill, were you gonna say something or no? Okay. All right.
Mayor, would it be, would, would it be possible to ask staff and, and maybe representatives of area to be in a position to have a very deep dive, detailed overview of the solar garden project? That's more, I've heard more about it this evening than, than I ever have. That was a, that was a nice overview, but like, I'd really, I'd really like, I'm completely in the dark on the business model, the financial implications, um, the impact on the utility. I mean, I have, I have literally 1,000 questions and I, and, uh, on, on that topic for $700,000 of taxpayer dollars. So I'd just like to know a little more before it got included in our base case because I, I think it has much more, there's many, much more nuance there than simply the line replacement, which is more easy and understandable. I think for everyone to get their heads around what that is and what the benefits are.
I think it's a really excellent point right now, um, Councillor Feeny. I had hoped, and I mean, you know, obviously the current situation being what it is, I understand there are some delays. Um, there is an intention for a presentation from area, Sean Fleming would be heading out with Aaron. Sean is our new employee with area who focuses on the solar garden development. And an amazing amount of work has happened over the past few months with Sean heading it up right down to geotechnical work on the sites and work on leases and agreements and everything. And the intention is for briefing the council, which was originally intended to be a part of this budget meeting process. And essentially I'd asked Sean, and I believe that we are a matter of weeks away from a detailed presentation to council. So I, I guess, you know, it's always frustrating to try to shoehorn everything into an annual budget process. But what I would say is that we would not be proceeding with the solar garden either to application for funding with the Department of Energy or issuing of tenders or anything, um, other than the incurring of the operational costs around the project, which, as I said, is not included in the 703,000. The utility has put some money on that and you referenced that already when you were going through the utility for the year. There's a couple of items that reference that. So, um, we could have a report to council with Sean and Aaron. And then from there, council could determine if they would authorize proceeding with the solar garden project capital.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, so then I'll move along. Are there any other questions before we move on out of the capital altogether, like either on the water utility, electric utility capital or? Okay. This page, just a information page, a comparison of, uh, deed transfer tax rates. Starting on page 89, this is our 10-year capital draft plan, which just sort of shows everything that we've got planned for 2020, 2021 plus out a few years. Like Dylan was saying, uh, if we wanted to move some capital projects out a few years, then this is where we'd see that transfer happen. This basically, yep, sure. Sorry, Penny.
Um, I can't see you, Penny.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, I can't see you. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I'd like to request that this capital, um, plan be printed on long pieces of paper so that the font is bigger so that I could actually read it. Is that possible? We've always had them printed on, on legal-sized paper, nice and wide.
It's the only document in the printed version of this budget where we weren't able to achieve the accessibility standard. So, um, we can print a, a big version of it and it won't fit in with the rest of the budget document package. But if councillors want to go down by the office and pick up a, a big version of it, in the online version of it, of course, you can zoom in, so that's quite convenient. Couldn't we get councillors to weigh in if they want to pick up a large print version of that document?
Me.
Councillor Carver?
I would like a large print version of the document.
We're at nine o'clock.
Simply that section, simply the capital plan.
Yes, no, I know. That's, that's the one you're, yeah, because everything else is 12-point. I mean, we, we were quite conscientious about it, but Luke was regretful that that was the one thing we couldn't get to come out 12-point and still be legible.
Council, what would you like to do? It's 9:00 PM. Deputy Mayor, you're on mute.
So we are, um, I mean, I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, uh, relatively at the end of this document, the last two sections on subsidies, our restatement and grants will be the subject of the May 5th agenda. Maybe it's an opportunity for council to do a, a quick review of if there are any directions for staff, um, for the May 5th meeting. I have a couple of directions I can summarize at this point.
And, and would you see having the capital plan available at the May 5th meeting, CAO?
Uh, if it's just a discussion about reformatting the 2021 items and then putting that, uh, additional emphasis on the timeliness of them so that we can look at that. Uh, I can have that out in the package, yep.
This is the, the 10-year capital plan you're talking about?
Oh, I was so that, I think only councillor Carver is looking for a paper version of that existing document. We can print that out for sure. But, uh, as far as amending, I wasn't going to amend the, the, uh, 10-year capital plan with the timeliness consideration because obviously we're only looking at 2021 for that.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll amend the 2021 part.
Are we proposing to leave the, I'm sorry, Councillor Carver?
Uh, yeah. Uh, oh, yes. I'm just suggesting that staff contact now Ludenburg County to ask, uh, to clarify, to verify whether or not they're still asking for the, uh, $300 grant for the tour.
We had the correspondence on that, I think.
Well, because.
Where they announced that the, the tour would not be taking place.
Right, so.
Yes, and they confirmed at that time that they were still looking for the money and they provided a new plan, uh, having to do with relief to businesses. I'm sure there's more information on their website.
Okay, but there, but it's not for the tour anymore.
Yes, you're correct. It's not for the tour. No, they, they have a COVID relief proposal. You certainly, uh, there was a reference to it in the documentation they sent out.
So when we get the budget, revised budget back, will there, the request for that line be rephrased to reflect their revised request?
Uh, I'm not, I guess we can, i- the amount there references the tour, does it? Yeah, I guess we could just remove the words tour contribution if that would be helpful. I wouldn't want to, sorry, go ahead.
If they've asked for something that's not a tour contribution, I'd like to know what they've asked for.
They have a second request, I think, do they not? 575 for a, a page in the magazine, an advertisement page?
They do, but I don't know if councillor Carver is concerned about that. She's just wanting to understand what they were asking to redirect the 500 to. I, I can go back and try to reforward you the packages you've received, the correspondence. So, um, I, I believe it was on the 14th. I'll have to look back on, I can try to find that for you again.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you.
That will be discussed on the 5th of May.
I think the grants will be, and then that grant, you'll have the consideration of the current.
So we will leave the rest of the budget discussions, including the tax rate final piece, uh, to the 5th and then ultimately to the 12th.
So my summary of changes for tonight, um, is essentially we have a, uh, request for, so we're going to correct some errors. Obviously, we had errors noted even from the questions that were submitted by email. Luke's got a few, like the capital reserve balance. Um, we also have a motion tonight to increase the infrastructure charge to $295 in the draft budgets. But we'll make that change and the projections on the capital reserve balance from that. We have a suggestion around changing the accessibility amount. And, you know, there may be some other capital projects that we would move or operating initiatives that we would move, but we don't have direction on those. So I would, uh, suggest that my direction for next meeting is to reformat the capital sheet and we'll make the corrections to the budget and we'll add the, uh, the increase in the infrastructure. But I, I don't have other changes directed at this time. So, you know, that's, that's what we've been directed at this point to do. And then we can take additional direction on the 5th. We could revise the budget again, either to the 12th or if council felt there was a need for an additional meeting.
All right. And we had a, we had an in-camera item. Do you wish to proceed to that now?
It's only there to support council's discussion because there are certain items, like I referenced, the award of the, um, our request for proposals, uh, contract on the municipal plan development. So there, there are no items that I need to suggest in closed session here, but we'll leave a closed session item on the agenda for the 5th and maybe.
For the 5th, all right. Okay, is, is everyone comfortable with that? He'll make, the CAO will make the changes. We'll finish the budget discussion on the 5th and the in-camera item will shift to the 5th as well. And then based on the discussions on the 5th, the budget will come to a regular meeting on the 12th for council's approval. Okay, Councillor O'Neill has given me one of those. All right, hearing that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by councillor Bane, seconded by councillor Carver. Good night, ladies and gentlemen, and good night.
Before you all sign off, though, we should ask Kelly if there are any questions from our live stream.
Oh, I forgot about Kelly.
I didn't want us to forget.
No questions. Nope.
Well, there we go. We asked.
How many people sat for the whole two hours?
Um, five.
Ooh, geez, excellent. All right, we'll talk again.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
See you Thursday.
Thank you, John.